All right, we'll call our select board meeting for tonight, February 19th, 2020, to order. And we'll start with our consent agenda. We have warrants to approve, AP 2032, AP 2032V, AP 2032S, AP 2033DPW, and PR 2017. We have the eighth annual Helping Hearts for Hadley Schools 5K Family Walk. And you here to talk about that? Over here, over here to talk about that, okay. Well, we'll just set that aside. Accounting Services and Town Accountant Agreement with PVPC and designation of Eric Kinsherf as Town Accountant. Then we have the Asparagus Festival, WGBY, June 6th, 2020. That's you, okay, yeah, we'll set this. Thank you. And then we have the State Legislature asking for confirmation language for special act of legislation. We have the Beer and Cider Garden, June 12th, 19th, 26th, and July 3rd, 2020. You want to say something? And then we have the one-day liquor license, top of the campus, May 1st, 2020, commencement ball, Mullins Arena floor, all alcohol. One-day liquor license, top of the campus, men's hockey game playoff, Mullins Center concourse concessions, March 13th, 14th, 15th, wine and malt only. And then a one-day liquor license, top of the campus, men's hockey game playoff, Mullins Center, Home Love Club, March 13th, 14th, 15th, all alcohol.
So motion to approve, but it looks like since we have company, we should pull out the Helping Hearts for Hadley Schools. Asparagus Festival and also the...
Beer and Cider Garden. Anything else anybody here for? Just to be sure, yeah?
I just have an issue with Escalon Cafe that I want to bring attention to.
Oh, okay, we'll wait on that until public comment, okay. Okay, so put those aside. Second, any discussion about those we've mentioned? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we can do the Helping Hearts first.
Great.
You guys want to go?
Yeah, sure. So my name is Stacy Reed and this is one of my board members, Kelly Higgins. And we're here to look for support again from our select board and the town. We are on our eighth 5K race and two-mile walk for the Hadley School system. To date, we've raised $175,000. So still going strong. Of that $175,000, we've given back an approximate $130,000, $130,000 in technology, art supplies, PE supplies, special ed supplies. We've recently purchased...
Desktop computers.
Desktop computers for the entire elementary school library. We've done ice machines for Hopkins. We've done a gamut of items. So we'll be here again. Our race this year is April 5th, on Sunday, same race route, same everything.
Have you done your normal coordination with the police department?
Yep, I have upcoming, yep. We have upcoming meetings with them and all of that good stuff.
Great.
I'll make a motion to approve and just to thank you for all that you do. It's appreciated certainly through all the community.
Oh, can I, I forgot to ask about hanging the sign on Route 9.
Oh, in front of the Russell School?
Yeah.
Just give you the thumbs up.
Great.
Scare ball, the sign.
That's official right there.
Thumbs up. Perfect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it.
Yes.
I hope we will.
Yeah, yeah. I want you.
And then we have the Asparagus Festival. You walk, there's a nice walking course.
Good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to come say hello. We're planning for the eighth annual Asparagus Festival, the seventh to be held on the town commons. Our date is here is June 6th. And we've been spending the last several months planning and adjusting the festival a little bit to build out our capacity to manage it a little bit better. So we're pretty confident that we can meet the expectations and help carry more of the burden of managing traffic and parking.
Is there any progress? One of the many concerns that were brought to us last year was that local farmers from Hadley that wanted to participate found it cost prohibitive to even...
I don't know how that misinformation got out. The pricing structure for vendors is farmers are $75 to come be part of the festival. We've kept it at the same rate. Everyone else is paying $100 or $200 to be there, but we wanted to keep the entry point really low to encourage farmers to come. So I don't know how we cut through that misconception where that's the, you know, it's a really hard thing for farmers to take a Saturday and come. So we've tried to get rid of all the barriers we could to that.
I would suggest reaching out to the Hadley Agricultural Commission or Committee and kind of spread the word and they can get that out there to all the farmers.
Absolutely.
And if somebody wants to be a vendor, is there a place they can go to?
Me.
Just to see you?
It's me.
Okay.
And after we get, after we didn't want to be presumptuous, so we haven't posted any links or infrastructure to sign up yet. So once, once you guys approve, then we'll move forward and we should have a link up in a week and a half or two. So, and I can share that link too. You know, the thing is, is that we do curate who is at the festival only because we don't want, you know, toy sellers from somewhere else to come in. And we try to, we have some criteria for participation. You can only sell what you make or that is produced locally, whether it's food or craft. And then we do have a category for small businesses, but it's a very, it's a percentage of the overall, it's about 5% of the vendors who we allow to do that. So really, it's really a good balance of nonprofits, nonprofits who come information will provide activities, farmers, crafters. We do, we do, we are very careful about that because there are a lot of carnivals around, but this is, this is a different kind of event.
Great.
Sure. That sounds good.
Can we have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Okay, thank you.
Subject to...
Absolutely.
We have a coordination meeting.
All of the sign-offs from DPW, Public Safety, and the other interested parties.
Okay. All those in favor?
Fire chief and a police chief approved it. We just need to get in touch.
Yeah, we've been in communication as we sort of built out the capacity to be able to meet our responsibilities for the growth. These are problems of success, so, or challenges of success.
And June 6th is right in the middle of asparagus season too.
Yes, thank good, well, it's at the tail end though, Joyce, it's sort of like...
May, beginning of May.
Beginning of May, peak, right?
It's peak.
Perfect. It's perfect, absolutely.
Well, thank you all.
Thank you, yeah, thanks for coming. The Beer and Cider Garden.
All right, well, I'm here to seek permission to use the common again for another four Fridays that Andrew, Sam, and I will be coordinating, having music and games and food, local beer, and very local cider. And then just highlighting all the food and beer and cider, everything highlighting Hadley agricultural businesses, farming businesses. So everybody who took part last year from Hadley, and I think we're going to continue that this year. It was so great when most of you came, so, you know. I don't know if you have any questions?
I heard lots of positive feedback from it last year.
I heard nothing but positive feedback.
Yeah, that's great.
That's great. We felt the same way.
My doggy didn't like it.
Did he get a look, a look of beer?
No, he just like laid on the ice cubes that were falling down. Yeah.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All abstaining?
We didn't, you want to vote on the asparagus before I interrupt you or...
We did.
We did vote, but we could take it again. I shouldn't have said any more discussion and you said something. But one time I'd say no. Does anybody have any discussion? Do you want to vote on it again, John? Yeah?
All in favor?
All in favor of the Asparagus Festival?
Aye.
Okay. We can move on to, I think we got them all there, so we can move on to public comments. We can open this up, anything that anybody has for public comment. Just please limit your comments to three minutes so that other people can speak. So, go ahead, sir, just maybe...
My name is Tom Weinzick.
Yeah.
I own the property directly behind Escalon Cafe and directly to the west as well. So my property encompasses their entire bounds.
Okay.
Couple issues I have, I was at the planning board last night and the parking is out of control there. I own the house directly behind Escalon and they're actually using my driveway to come into the parking lot. And that whole area has been completely destroyed. And as far as the rear of the parking behind Escalon, all the cars are supposed to park towards Route 9 and one single line of parking facing towards Route 9. And they're supposed to be from my property line, there's supposed to be 11-foot green space, which they totally did away with and made it parking. So now the parking comes right up to my property line and they park the cars towards Route 9 and towards the south. When they park towards the south, which is not what the site plan shows, the lights go right in the kitchen, right in the living room of my house. That's why when it was designed, there was no parking facing to the south. All the parking was facing towards Route 9, so when they came in, there was one row of parking this way, no parking behind. And now by doing away with that green area, they got an extra 11 feet, so they bring the aggregate right up to the arborvitae, so when the cars pull in there, the headlights are right in my windows. And that's not part of the original site plan. I can show you, I've got it with me.
What did the planning board tell you last night?
Well, they, they don't address parking. The parking is controlled by the select board is what I was told.
Street parking is controlled by the...
Street parking, not property parking.
Well, the other issue is that the parking that's going on on the common and in front of my house and in front of the driveway where the tenants can't get their mail because the cars are... I actually lived there today. This is at 2:00 in the afternoon, the easiest time of day, and this car is parked right on the sidewalk, right on West Street, so the pedestrians can't get by. This would be hard for you guys to understand because this is where they're crossing over my driveway and over the lawn to get into Escalon's driveway. This is the row of cars that are parked to the south behind Escalon, that all the headlights go right into the house. And just so that...
So your house is on the other side of the arborvitae?
On the south, right behind Escalon, right.
But behind the arborvitae?
Correct, correct. But the arborvitae, then it's supposed to be 11 feet towards Escalon, the green area.
Whose arborvitae are they?
I'm not, I think Escalon planted them, but...
You did not plant them.
I did not plant them. No.
So in order for a border of, tell me if I'm wrong, but my memory is getting old. So my memory is telling me there has to be a three-foot boundary from your property to any border from another person's property. And I guess I would have to ask the building inspector that, is that, do you remember any of that, John?
Yeah.
There's got to be a three-foot...
That keeps the air there. That's overburdened on that client's properties. That's the reason I do that. So when they plant it, as the tree grows, the overburden is supposed to stay on the original owner's property.
But I mean, even with the fence or anything, there's a three-foot barrier from one property to the other, if I remember.
The problem is you can put a three or four-foot wide arborvitae in when you first plant it, which then turns into an eight or 10-foot wide arborvitae. So now they're impeding on the neighbor's property and on their own property. And this is where we get property disputes, you know, just between the neighbors. And, you know, if you get along with your neighbor, that's one thing, but if you don't, then, then you run into major issues like this.
The only other, I don't want to take up too much of your time, guys, just, just a final thing I want to, I want to just bring to your attention as well. Because they are planning on leasing the original Charlie Cash's garage, so on and so forth here. And this is what, the other thing I positively want to resolve before they're granted any permission to do anything, this is, this is actually a new survey that was just done...
I think, Tom, it's the planning board that grants them...
I understand, I just want to, before they come to anything, this building right here, this is my property line here, okay? This building is supposed to be 15 feet off my property line. It's actually six inches on my property. I need to have that building put 15 foot off the nearest corner of my property to the code.
Tom, that's, I'm sorry, is that, is that a new construction?
No.
No, that's that one that's like falling down.
Yep. And, you know, what irritates me, the reason I'm here, I wouldn't bother you folks with this, but I made a connection with this gentleman that owns it. After Randy Iser did the survey work, I went, because I've got a hayfield on this side and I haven't been able to maintain it. And Charlie Cash, he had so much debris there and he wouldn't tell us where the property line was. So now that it's been surveyed, I wanted to clean it. And I tried to contact him two times, left my contact information at his business to address this issue. And I was told by multiple people that have been doing this, he says, I'm not moving anything for anybody, I don't have to. The code is the code, the code is 15 feet from my property line. And that, that really needs to be resolved because my hayfield can come all the way to here and I'm losing like 30 feet. 30 feet times 750 is over half an acre of hay.
So I would certainly address this also. My feeling is he said, the building inspector?
I did already.
And what did he say?
He said, there's multiple other violations on the site that they look over. So there's, there's other things that I mentioned that he put on that was supposed to be an outdoor patio.
Yeah.
Well, that was passed on the original plan, but then he enclosed it, then he put a roof on it, it was still legal with a, because he had a canvas roof, but then he heated it. And I was in there today and there was 24 people in that canvas area, which is supposed to be an open space, not enclosed and not heated. So he's so far out of control there. And I wouldn't be so upset except for the fact he wouldn't even acknowledge, you know, that I went there and called me back and say, okay, this is what we want to do.
Did the planning board do a continuance or did they do...
Yes. They were gonna, he wanted, the lawyers were there last night and they were going to pass it, they continued until March 17th.
What were they going to pass? Do you know?
I don't even know. I, I just went there with, with these issues here and like I said...
They're probably going to need a variance for that anyway. I would say they're...
Well, there's a bunch of things that they had to address.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's drainage, there's lighting, there's, you know, paint.
There's a whole bunch of things.
Tom, do you want to be put on the agenda for our meeting this period?
Yes, I do.
You know, in the future, so...
Well, what, I don't know what we're going to do.
It needs to be resolved here first before it comes here.
Yeah.
And it needs to be taken care of by the building inspector and any other property things that are going on over there. We do have governance over the building inspector, but I think that we need to, first of all, have the planning board make a decision and then we would go from there, would be my purview.
Yeah, that's what I would think too. I mean, we have, our only jurisdiction where you're talking is the Route 9 parking. We've already put up no parking signs in certain areas of Route 9, or, I'm sorry, West Street there. And, you know, we might be able to do something on the one common area where that person was parked in the sidewalk, that looked bad.
See, that's, the, the real problem honestly is that they're actually using my driveway and they're going across the actual lawn to enter their parking lot.
They're going across the buffer between the sidewalk and the street now, not only parking on the street, but...
Is that town...
That's still the town.
We own property.
It's all town property.
That's all town common.
And we own property on West Street also, so that piece that's in between the sidewalk and the road is still town property.
It's still town property.
So they're going across that.
Yeah, and they also, on the entrance, they made a temporary, they dumped a load of gravel and put three parking places right on the town, right on the town land.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, who regulates this? I mean, there should be somebody there.
Yeah.
So that's why I'm here.
Okay. For, for the mailbox issue?
Definitely.
Would you be okay with a no parking sign on your lawn there?
Absolutely. My, my sisters have put them up three times, okay? And every time they're put up, you go two days later, they either run over or thrown in the arborvitae. That's the truth.
But, I mean, we'll put up a real one, but can we put this on a future agenda just for... Let's put it on a future agenda, bring this up.
And maybe David could have a conversation with Tim Nyheart too and just...
And then maybe we can talk with the DPW as well. I mean, if it gets too out of control, we can do something that happened at the end of West Street.
It's a real mess, guys, that's the thing, you know? And a lucrative business like that should have a little respect for his butters, and I happen to be the butter.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And he's not talking to you, so that seems like that's part of the problem too, that's amplifying it.
It is.
So, you know, let's have it on another agenda and see what we can do.
Very good.
Let's have, let's see the building inspector.
If you can give Jennifer maybe your contact information, I could reach out to the property owner too and give him that and say, you should really just talk to this guy.
Yeah, because the surveyor already spoke to him.
Yeah.
He was so arrogant about his response.
Yeah.
It's like, I, the town can't make me do that. Hey, we all have rules to follow.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Appreciate it very much.
Okay.
It was a pleasure.
Let me give you my card.
Thank you.
Is anybody else here for public comment? And let's just do the public hearing real quick. Pins, change of ownership?
Essentially, the transfer of stock is what we're doing.
Transfer of stock, I'm sorry. Change of officers, not change of ownership.
Yep. So this is, y'all have already voted on this on October 17th. I missed the advertisement requirements for that, so the ABCC just sent it back two weeks ago. We advertised it and David and his partner Jim are here tonight in case y'all have any questions about the transfer of stock from Penns Hadley LLC to Penns Entertainment Group LLC.
We'll let you know in a meeting.
Thank you. All right, thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Good night.
Previously, y'all approved this change.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do the budget presentation. Are you ready, Dave?
I'm ready, I'm ready when you are.
All right, well, you, you go for it here.
So first of all, I think we each get a budget book.
Everybody gets prizes.
As to the ones I have... So this is my presentation of the fiscal year 2021 budget. That's from July 1st, 2020 to June 3rd, 2021. I already covered that.
We have to give it back. Sure.
The 2021 budget proposal is balanced based upon recommended revenues, transfers from other funds, and recommended and adjusted expenditures. Our revenues are $20 million, $20,047 for the general fund, and expenses of $20 million, And transfers in from other funds are $589,568 to represent a balanced budget in the general. The enterprise funds, Joyce, this would be...
What page are you on?
Uh, you would...
Page eight.
Eight?
Eight.
Eight.
No, I would go, I would go...
I think you're deeper than that.
Are you 19?
40. You're reading the numbers, I'm looking at... Is it about 11 or 14?
I'm on page 18, can you see? Same question.
I got 19.
Sorry, page, page 19, page 19. For the enterprise funds, the revenues are $2,146,967. And the expenses are $2,171,792, with transfers in of about 24,825 in order to bring that into balance. We have a number of goals that this budget is designed to achieve. First of all, goal number one, our human resources, welcome Ed O'Connor. That we created the position in FY 2020 last year, so the FY 2021 budget is committed to sustaining funding for human resources services for 12 months. Goal number two is economic development planning. So goal 2.1 is for the select board to create a planner for economic development and budget and grant writing. And the proposed budget supports a halftime planner starting in July 2020. The new planner will support the work of the planning board and the select board to create job opportunities, expand the commercial and industrial tax base, write major grants, and add new revenues to the town of Hadley. Goal number three, supporting services. 3.1, we, last year, we deployed existing support staff to provide support to the tax collector, the treasurer, fire department, and board of health offices. This allowed department heads and key staff to focus on core responsibilities and to assign work to, in a more focused way to support and maintain government functions, goals, and objectives. So in this budget for '21, additional support staff are assigned to public works to increase effectiveness in providing services and to the police department to support their efforts in achieving accreditation. Goal 3.2, last year, we expanded the treasurer's hours by five to allow the position to devote more time for strategic financial management. This year, 21, tax collector and assistant tax collector hours are expanded by two and a half hours each per week to provide more time for customer service, billing, and collection. Goal 3.3, last year, we initiated the senior tax work, work program and the internship program. And for this fiscal year budget coming up, we continue these programs to add another level of support for routine functions, document scanning on the new digitized document management system, and other special projects. Goal four, public safety, last, back in 2017, 18, 19, and 20, we added more staff, new functions, in order to achieve greater coverage for public safety, that's police, fire, ambulance, and dispatchers. In 2021, the town will continue to support advanced life care ambulance service for 24-hour coverage. Goal 4.1, yeah, I just covered that. Goal five, public works. In FY 19, we very well welcomed Mr. Christopher Okafor as the new director of DPW. In 2021, we identified public works as the budget priority for this year, and the budget supports enhanced services in cemetery, highway, building maintenance, water and wastewater functions. Goal 5.1 in FY 21, the town reviewed sewer and water rates, that's an ongoing process, and we hope to settle on that in order to increase sustainable budgets for the water and wastewater departments. Goal 5.2, a library position is added for cemetery care, building maintenance, custodial, and water functions. 5.3, we're planning for several retirements and replacement of long-term employees in core positions. Goal six, building operations. In the budget for the current fiscal year, we have building operations which covers utility costs, sewer water, electricity, heating, oil gas, as well as IT, telephone, and other, other functions. We have them scattered over a number of budgets. Since we're completing three new buildings, it only makes sense to combine and consolidate all of those budgets into one new budget for operations. So funding for building maintenance and operations consolidated into the 190 building operations and 490 building maintenance. Old standalone accounts such as 193, 196, 199 will be deleted from the budget. And this gives the department heads more time to focus in on their core responsibilities rather than fretting about the water bill or the sewer bill or the telephone or the heating bill. Those will be handled by other folks. Goal 6.2, funding for the building maintenance program and operations will be increased to account for a net increase of two new buildings being added to town of Hadley inventory structures. Goal seven, financial management, first of all, OPEB. We will continue to increase our annual OPEB contribution by two and a half percent to raise the annual contribution to $277,195. This is in line with our long-established funding schedule. Free cash, we're going to restart our free cash program. We suspended our free cash program in FY 19. We suspended our free cash program in FY 19 and '20 in order to account for new ambulance service and the lack of certified free cash in 2020, and it's time for us to restart that free cash policy. Free cash policy is to reduce our reliance upon free cash for operating expenses by $75,000 annually till that reaches zero. The number that we're using for FY '21 is $140,000, so you're about one year away from bringing that down to zero. Stabilization fund, all right, we took money from stabilization and transferred it over to OPEB, which is a very smart way of investing those monies, but in FY '21, we will use free cash in the amount of $246,804 to replenish the stabilization fund. Unfunded pension liability, this is something new and different. It's an emerging threat that is, people have taken seriously enough that there was specialized training at the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Meeting. Our retirement system, Hampshire County Retirement System, carries an unfunded liability of approximately $200 million, which is spread out all over the county, so it sounds like a big number, but our share of it's much smaller than that. They have us on a 12- to 13-year pay-down schedule, but the payoff of the amortization of that unfunded liability increases our costs year to year. So, to mitigate that cost, I'm proposing that we create, for the first time, a new special stabilization account to mitigate the cost increase for the unfunded pension liability, and I'm proposing that we use a starting figure of $75,000. 7.5, we will similarly look at the enterprise funds and make sure that they're contributing their share of that $75,000 so that those costs are evenly apportioned between the general fund and the enterprise funds. Debt management, in addition to our obligatory debt payments, we will add an additional $100,000, one time only, to pay down short-term principal within the levy limit. The goal here is to create borrowing capacity for much-needed capital items without impacting taxes or cutting funding from operational budgets. So, this would be in lieu of putting money into a capital stabilization account, reduce our short-term principles so that we can have more capacity to borrow for such things The alignment of the town meeting sequences, in the past, we have used both the annual town meeting and the special town meeting to prepare a fiscal budget that meant that their budget season was, in effect, 12 months long, so we were constantly working on budgets. With the influx of the certified free cash that we just got, and the increased revenues that we have from our business district, I think that for the first time, we can change our pattern so that we do the annual budget at the annual town meeting, be done with it, and then reserve the special town meeting for policy, bylaws, zoning, and capital. So, that'll free up departments to, for six months, to work on other things other than Open items in the budget include my position, I've announced my retirement effective December 31st, 2020. I've added the funding for a new town administrator, and this will be contingent upon contract negotiations with the new person. Our economic development planner is shown as an employee, but we may want to think about this as a contracted services with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commissioner. School budget, the school department is still developing its budget. Final figure will be available when the school committee holds its public hearing on March 31st. Water and sewer rates, an ongoing topic. And then administrative charges to the enterprise funds. In response to questions about prior year's administrative charge formulas, the formulas for determining hidden charges to taxpayers was revised to include estimated amounts as opposed to verified amounts. The result is a loss of $109,577 in revenues to the general fund, but it takes that pressure off the enterprise fund, so it could be an acceptable trade-off. Financial management team will be meeting next Thursday, not tomorrow, but next Thursday, to talk about the formulas and make a solid recommendation to the select board at your next meeting. I want to thank the department heads for all of their support and their help in putting together a budget that works. This document is very complex. I certainly expect you to take it under advisement, but I couldn't put it together without the help of elected officials, town departments, boards and committees, and all of our advisors. We're fortunate to have high-quality, highly skilled, and trained, hard-working government workforce and effective leadership to guide the community. I look forward to discussing this in the future with the select board and the finance committee and the capital planning committee. Do you have any questions?
I have one question.
Yes.
The part-time planner, does that fall under the planning board or town hall general government?
I put it in the planning board budget. They did not request it, so you'll see it as an administrative, administrators recommend it in increase.
Oh, and the planning board will oversee that?
They should coordinate, so that's, it seemed logical to put it all together.
Especially if that person is going to be writing grants for the town. That should be between both boards.
I personally would like to see that position be a full-time person, just because I think that would be a more effective position than what we're looking for out of that position. So, I know I personally would advocate for us trying to find money to do that, you know, finance committee and...
You sell enough beer, and we're going to get that position.
Yeah, let's figure it out.
And I echo what, that was the one thing that struck me, and two things on that. One is really what we're doing is making an investment, because as Joyce just said, the opportunity for somebody to find grant opportunities for us to take advantage of to bring additional money in is critical, and we're also talking about the economic development side of it, so having somebody boots on the ground, doing a lot of legwork that could even, just one business coming to town that doesn't exist right now that increases our revenue base is huge, and it's an ongoing revenue stream created. And the reality is, when you offer a half-time position, you are immediately limiting the pool of candidates, so...
That's what I see too.
Right, something like that. You're either going to wind up with somebody who's maybe between jobs, they take the half-time job, but they're still have an eye out looking for a full-time job. You may find somebody who's wanting to wind down, so they're full-time, but they're kind of winding their way out of the career. Not that that's a bad thing, but again, you're limiting. Or you get somebody who's just so greedy and they may or may not be able to be effective. And just with a $20 million budget and our reliance on the commercial corridor, we have to make some, I think, you know, kind of some dramatic changes that are going to take a long time, Ed.
But somebody too, I mean, you have to think about, because I do, as you get older, you think about, I'm not going to work no 40, 50 hours a week, and if somebody's got a good gig for me to work 30 hours a week, other than the 60, and you can be doing what you like doing, but in a smaller capacity, then sometimes that also plays to the benefit of whoever they're serving too. So, there's kind of two ways to look at that, whether it's a part-time plus position, close to full-time, you know, and seeing how that goes, and if it demands a more hourly rate than, or more time, then, you know, that's something to certainly look at, and again, I think it depends on funding, on what we can afford.
Yeah, yeah, it always depends on funding.
Always, yeah.
You know, it's going to come down.
Money talks.
But I just think, you know, I'd like to put the stake in the ground right at the front of the process for the, so the finance committee knows where, you know, you just said it, I'm saying it, you know, everybody else can have their own opinion, but I would want to be looking at this budget with an eye towards that being an unbelievably critical position for this town at this point in time.
And just to reiterate what you're saying, or my two cents is just, I want to see somebody that's really, really good in that position, and really a self-starter, and is looking to look for opportunities and all those things, and as much as I want them to support the planning board, I don't want them to just get in the planning board and not be able to get out of there, be able to do things out in the community and see things around, and I just feel like we need to pay a person to do that, you get what you pay for. I do see Joyce aside, maybe that person is out there that is happy with a part-time position and willing to do it, but I just see trying to get that person in full-time is going to attract good candidates, so.
Never know.
Yeah.
So, do we maybe consider putting them under general government, though, if we're going to expect them to be doing, because then maybe we could, since we have full-time people here to manage general government...
Yeah.
...versus a part-time planning board staff, then, I mean, obviously, a lot of their duties are going to involve the planning board, but I just, yeah, the other stuff too, it's going to be...
And the planning board has always used the planning commission.
Exactly, yeah.
They're, we meet with them frequently throughout the year and do plans for them and everything, so.
Yeah, I mean, I was really imagining it more as a town hall position, recognizing the obvious relationship between this person and the planning board.
Yeah.
Because, you know, it seems like the state has got a little bit more broader outlook on the grants, too. So, I think we're going to be able to apply for a lot more grants where in the past, we weren't able to get the grants because of our financial situation here, you know, and further on down the line, if they're going to be open to all the communities at any rate, you know, we may need somebody to try to write these grants and get some funding for us.
Yeah.
You know, I don't see it coming from the federal level for, for average, pretty much, right now, but, you know, back in like '88, when they did the sewer plan, it was 70 or 85% funded by the federal government, you know, through EPA. Something like that just ain't coming down the road, you know.
But if we find the right person, though, the position could pay for itself.
Yeah.
If we found the right person, then it was impressive if that was doing that.
And just, it might be something where we don't see a payback in year one, year two, but, you know, it might take five years for this to start paying off, but I think it will be, and it's about getting that person established and plan, you know, I think a lot of grant writing and that kind of thing is seeing what we have to do to be able to get the grants in the future.
Well, on the other hand, the planning board, for two years now, has said it's time for a planner, you know?
Yeah.
So, there's definitely a need there also, whether it's full-time or part-time, you know, depending on what you're looking at.
Yep.
And who you get to apply in.
Well, it sounds like we're relatively unanimous in our outlook on that, so can we...
$35,000 somewhere in the budget?
Flick of the wrist, David, flick of the wrist.
That's what you got, these smart judges.
Okay, what are we cutting out?
Are we good on that, or do we want to?
Sure.
I don't think we have to identify anything right now. I have one more question on another part of the budget, and I don't want to skip over the planner section, but I, you know, are we good on, you guys good on the thing? My question was just on the, this retirement stabilization fund?
Mm-hmm.
Is this something, so we'll have a stabilization fund, we'll be putting money in there, we'll be taking any money out and be paying Hampshire Retirement from that fund, or it's just to, that account will, account will build and one day will make a payment to that system?
Yeah, so we're...
I don't understand the mechanics.
We're just looking at this unfunded liability seriously for the first time. Our assessment for...
But what do you have OPEB for, though?
This is different from OPEB.
This is your pension as opposed to your healthcare pension.
Not my pension. Yours. I don't get any. So, that would be pension for town employees.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But they pay into it. Your town employees pay into their own pension. Are we matching it? Are we matching their pension?
Well, we're doing, we're doing a couple of things here.
How's that?
It's an ongoing thing as they retire, that OPEB goes up.
Yes, this is OPEB, this is the pension.
I know, but, but...
So, you pay into your pension as an employee?
Yeah.
And this might be something we take offline to talk about, I just am confused about the function of this.
So, the employee puts a certain amount of money in, because it's a defined benefit plan, the employee is guaranteed, based on a formula, a certain payout, right? So...
For life, after you retire.
For life after you retire.
Right.
So, regardless of what the employee's putting into it, there's some smart actuary sitting off on the side saying, okay, in order for me to pay the proverbial Joyce municipal employee, you know, 80% because she maxes out of her height, whatever it is, you know, you know, $42,000 for the rest of her life, they're figuring out how much money you actually need, and rates of return, and all of that stuff to come up with that number. So, yes, there is money going into it, but that doesn't like match what that actual liability will be in the future.
I don't, I don't know offhand what the percentage of county retirement is right now, our portion of the payment. Do you have that, David?
Yeah, so the employees pay up to 11%.
Yeah, but how much does the town pay on that?
Well, we pay, we pay a total of 140, no, $1,400,000, round figures, annually.
For the whole town, okay.
$969,000 of that, or two-thirds, is the unfunded liability amortization.
Okay.
All right, and that amortization increases over time until the whole thing is paid off, so that increase from one year to the next is about $71,000. So, we're not talking about...
But it's ongoing, as another person retires, that may go up a percent.
Yeah, or they live longer, the actuarial tables, I mean, there's all sorts of, all sorts of variables that work here. Rate of return based upon investments, which typically they're overstated, so, you know, how long have I been looking at a 15-year pay-down of the retirement system while I've been here for 15 years, and I haven't seen it skid anywhere close to seeing that thing get paid off?
Yeah.
So, this is going to be around for a while, and the assessment just keeps on increases.
And it was a liability because we took X amount of dollars out originally, six years ago, or seven years ago, when I first started on the board, and we were just covering the amount...
That was for OPEB, though.
Yeah, we were just covering the amount that we needed for the people that retired. So, now, we're over and above that at this point.
Yeah, that's, that's for OPEB.
Yeah.
Which is different from what he's talking about.
Yeah, no, 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 I understand, but you need to understand OPEB before you understand what he's trying to do here now to make another stabilization account, you know?
So, did I ask about that stabilization? Just going back to the question that Christian's asking. So, with OPEB, we took the approach of actually putting the money into an investment account with, using Bartholomew as our advisor, so that money is actually in the market, so it has the opportunity, you know, to grow, not guarantee. Right, so it's...
As a trust, yeah.
Right, as a trust. So, why a stabilization fund rather than a trust?
Because I'm not aware of any legislation out there that establishes a trust for the pension liability. Again, we're just looking at this for the very first time, so there may be elements to this that I am not aware of, but the idea that I'm trying to achieve, at least initially, is to take the edge off of the annual increases that we're very likely to encounter as the Hampshire retirement system, and all the retirement systems have unfunded liabilities, not just Hampshire, but as they try to get that under control from their members, we're going to be paying more per... But as they try to get that under control from their members, we're gonna be paying more per year. If we could blunt that, then that frees up dollars for other services in the budget.
Okay.
Why couldn't, why couldn't we put more in OPEB in the trust and invest that money as we're doing now?
Once you put it in OPEB, it stays in OPEB.
Right. You can't utilize it, just as a trust account.
So maybe we should put this money, I've got it, in the stabilization account. We should just maybe talk to Dan Carey and Senator Comerford about some legislation for being able to do a trust.
I was gonna say, and where are they at with funding the Hampshire County Retirement in the state?
Or they would say, why don't you just increase your payment? I mean, you have a minimum obligation that you have to pay annually, call it a million dollars that we're paying. We could pay a million seventy-five.
Can't do that either.
Not individually, across the board.
Yeah.
And I think Davis pursued that.
Yeah, so we explored this with the Hampshire Retirement System and said, can we give you more? And they said, no.
What?
Your money is all good here.
It has something to do with how it's chartered in the law. I don't fully understand, I don't think anybody really does. Because, right, everybody just tilted their head and went, wait, huh? But, yeah, there's, we can't prepay like we can OPEB.
As we, any pension system I've ever seen before, you have a minimum, minimum contribution amount, but then there's a band over which you can indeed overpay. So if you have, if you're a business, right, and you have a good year from a profit standpoint, you know that you could put in an extra amount into that pension. They willingly accepted that, it just gets worked into the calculation, so.
As an employee, you mean, an employee putting more in?
No, no, employee, or, yeah.
No, he, well, each individual can do what they want, because I, you know, opened a couple of savings accounts and IRAs over the years, you know, to help when I do retire, to take the balance of whatever I'm not getting from retirement.
Yeah.
Yeah, so there were a number of things that I did before coming up with this recommendation. I contacted a couple of other towns to see if they would be interested in pooling resources. They were not interested in spending money that way. I contacted the Hampshire Retirement System about some sort of prepayment or excess payment. They didn't see a way to make that happen. So I think we're, we're down to a special stabilization fund. I think that's the best way to start this journey.
Well, basically, this is just for when the bill finally arrives, that we know is coming at some point.
Yeah, so next year, you would have an additional seventy-five thousand stored away that you can apply towards the annual increase of the amortization schedule.
So the only real, well, so follow that logic. So we're putting seventy-five over here, so that when the bill comes in, we take it out of there and put it in. But it only works if you keep taking money and then putting it back in.
Right.
So what you're doing is you're taking one-time money, right? Kind of throwing it into a savings account.
Yep.
So that you don't then need to take it out of your operating, is that what we're doing?
That's what I'm trying to do.
But then if you put it into a stabilization account, does it take a town meeting to remove it from the stabilization account?
Two-thirds majority vote.
So.
And what do we need, two-thirds majority to create the stabilization account, right?
No, you just need a simple majority. Used to be you needed a two-thirds majority, but they changed the laws, and now you just need a simple majority.
Create a simple majority, but to take it out, you need two-thirds.
Boy, this is gonna take a long time discussing this on Town 40.
And what, and just one more question is, why seventy-five thousand? Why not thirty-five thousand? Then we can, we see forty thousand difference for another purpose.
You can.
Okay. But is there a reason behind seventy-five?
Seventy-five, seventy-five is because your increase for the first year paying down the amortization is seventy-one to eighty-one.
And that's for, okay, and that's just for year twenty-two, okay.
This is gonna take a little sleep time on this to think about it.
Yeah, that one, so anyway, okay, so that's one we're gonna have to think about, how to explain it and how to, what to do with that.
I'm sure standard and course would love it.
It's to soften the blow of an unpredictable billing cycle.
Yeah.
Well, also, we can meet and pay the other bills.
The other bills won't predict.
So any other questions or comments, things to discuss? Finance Committee, do you guys have any input right now, or?
No, I mean, I think this, this issue of seventy-five thousand is a prudent move. Because if the state comes up with another solution that's maybe financing the debt over a longer period, we're gonna have a pot of money that we can pull back in, which, correct, with the vote of the town meeting. If it turns out that they present a bill to three hundred and sixty-one something pounds in the state, and we're one of five, maybe, that have actually put aside money for this, we'll be in a better position than everybody else. For a little bit of pain, I think this is a prudent move.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and forward, forward thinking, for something that we all know is out there, so why ignore it?
Yeah.
And a lot of the communities around here you talk to are basically ignoring it, correct?
So far...
So far.
So far, probably what's been four years now since we did actually put that money into the OPEB, four or five years now.
So, yeah, since two thousand fourteen.
So David, I do have one overarching question. So when we go to the expenses, which is page forty-four, I think, the infamous column H, which is the administrators' adjustments?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we don't need to run through all of these right now, but have you communicated these adjustments to the department heads, or will you...
I will, I have not.
Okay, because that always creates a bit of a ruckus within twenty-four hours.
Yep.
What else is there?
Oh, not even twenty-four, was it, what, one? Half an hour?
Just by sending that right now, she's getting emails.
There might have been a text.
Yeah, there might have been a text, yeah.
Yeah, so Finance Committee is gonna be meeting with a number of departments next week, I think it is. And certainly, they need to have a copy of their budgets modified by me, so.
Is there an explanation, so, I mean, just for example, if I went to, you know, the Building Inspector's Department and I see that you've made an adjustment, would, will I be able to find the rationale for that adjustment in here?
Yes.
All documented?
Yes.
So I'll just say that I'm glad that we're moving the utilities and that kind of stuff into a single account or a couple of accounts. That way, like you said, the library isn't trying to pay their oil bill and things like that.
They're gonna have electricity, what's wrong with you?
Yeah, again, core competencies, you want people doing what they're trained to do, not, you know, dealing with things that...
It gives more flexibility, too. So if one runs over budget, we can end up going somewhere else.
See, very, coming on heat when we got it here.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else on the budget? Because I just wanted to note on our, because you guys have sent out your meeting schedule, and I just wanted to follow up that on March eighteenth, like, after you guys have kind of done your first couple rounds of meeting with the departments, to kind of come back and just meet with us, report if there are any issues, anything that our attention should be drawn to on that date. And then April Fool's Day, April first, we would have the opportunity to meet with the one hundred and two hundred series budgets, because those two will be done at that point, along with the seven hundred, eight hundred, and nine hundred. And then on April fifteenth, meet with you guys again to kind of get that status. And then on April twenty-second, we'd have the opportunity to meet with three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, and six hundred series budgets. So I think that's how we're gonna go about reviewing it this year, is Finance Committee's meeting with all the departments. We can kind of hear from them, where it's at, and then if we feel the need to meet with any departments individually, we can pull them in and talk to them. Or if they wanna come talk to us, they could do it at that time. So we'll just basically have four meetings, talking about the budget, two with the Finance Committee, two with departments.
So only if there's a disagreement between the department and the Finance Committee, basically, they can come and kind of plead our case, don't they?
Yeah, exactly. And then kind of rely on the Finance Committee's recommendation for everything up until then. If that sounds good.
Can I just be introduced to the new, I know Paul, but I don't feel like I know this other young gentleman.
Dylan.
Dylan.
Dylan, Dylan, hi, I'm Joyce York.
Hi, Joyce.
Dylan.
Just joined the Finance Committee.
Last name?
Mans.
Mans, okay, nice to meet you.
Yeah, nice to meet you.
Thanks for joining.
Yeah.
Do you want to tell me who you do for a living?
I work at an investment company in Amherst, work with Kyle and Dave, doing mixed-use buildings in downtown.
Great to have you on board, thank you. Thank you, Paul, also, for joining the Finance Committee.
It's nice to see some fresh faces, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're offending the other ones now.
No, I'm just saying, no, we're not trying to offend anyone.
You're saying you found the one person in town that you don't know?
No. My God, how did that happen? I don't know. Getting old, I guess.
Great, all right. Any other questions on the budget? You don't need to vote on anything, can move on to our next thing. We'll have these gentlemen to go home for the night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, David, for running us through it, and I'm sure it'll kick off the many heated discussions.
Robust.
Robust.
HR's on standby with the employee.
That's right. EAP referrals.
And were you here to talk with anything specific?
Just the town administrator thing, and then anything, I think, the DPW Director on topic, and then...
Yeah.
There might be one or two others on there.
Let's, let's jump into that real quick. So eight point two, DPW Director Contract Clarification. We're just gonna put that on hold right now and probably schedule an executive session to talk about that a little bit more on the board. Now, the third, is it the third or the fourth?
Fourth.
The fourth. And then we can just go right into Town Administrator Search. I don't know how we, where we wanna start this, we kind of left it off. We were going to talk about, you know, whether we wanted to do it internally, externally, whether David would kind of spearhead the, the search. Actually, I don't know if Ed, you were here when we talked about that, too?
No, I was saying that.
You were gone. Yeah, and then possibly hiring a, an outside recruiting firm for those services. David and I did get a chance to speak with two different organizations that, that are, that are, you know, recruiting services. And, you know, I really will speak that I think it would be a good decision for us to go to the recruiting option. I, I think that would...
How much?
It's going to be around ten grand.
Yee.
One of them said they could do it for under ten. So it's going to be that much. But it does, I think it really opens up the pool of candidates. And I think a lot more candidates feel comfortable going to those firms and those individuals and talking to them about Hadley, about what we need, as opposed to some external candidate trying to get ahold of one of us on the Select Board to find out what's going on. It provides a buffer where if somebody might be thinking about changing positions, but isn't going to make it public because there's a lot they put on the line when they do that, they're gonna feel more comfortable calling one, one of these people and talking with them about it than possibly letting it out into the public that they're looking for a new position. So I think that's one of the main services they supply, as well as, you know, getting to know more about what our needs are exactly to kind of describe the town. They're going to post the job across multiple services, MMA, their networks. A lot of these people that run the recruiting firms know a majority of the people in town administrator positions and coming up positions in the Commonwealth, as well as neighboring states. They would do candidate screening and really get us down to a handful of candidates that we can then choose from instead of us trying to screen thirty candidates.
I'm sorry?
Where did you hear about us, since you came out from?
Oh, I saw y'all on Indeed, actually.
Indeed.
But since we're on the topic, I didn't get a chance to talk to everybody. I had to withdraw my application because I'm deploying, I don't know if you heard or not, but I wanted to tell you face to face.
And we just saw that, so you're gonna be doing active duty?
Unfortunately, or fortunately, depending on who you are.
Sorry. Sorry.
So I had to quickly change my plans, it wouldn't be fair to the town if I...
Is there any time limit on how long for...
There are about ten months these days, give or take. Could be nine and a half, could be eleven.
And it would start on July sixteenth, is that the date? Yeah. So, yeah.
So, you know, I had one plans and, you know, the good Lord changed them for me, so.
Yeah.
It's all good.
At least Uncle Sam.
Uncle Sam, yeah.
Yeah.
Put the Lord's hands on that one.
Hopefully, to keep you safe, that's all.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, I think just on this topic, I certainly don't wanna waste money. This is probably the most important hire for the town of Hadley and that I expect, no, offense. It's pretty important, but I mean, this is a significant position. And not making sure that we have fully, you know, full access to any viable candidate, you know, I think is, I think, I just think it's critical. The list that you just rattled off, you know, it applies to any industry where you're, you know, in office, sometimes you're going, making decisions, go through a headhunter, place an agency, or whatever. There's so much involved with it. You know, they, they can make direct phone calls to a sitting municipal, what, Town Administrator or somebody who's got their public administration, whatever, again, that these people know about and say, hey, look at, are you aware of the fact that Hadley's hiring? Because a lot of people aren't necessarily, you know, actively looking, and they haven't really thought about it. So, you know, you, you could kind of wrestle up some pretty good candidates through that process as well. I just think it's too important for the sake of ten thousand dollars. Making the wrong hire is gonna cost us an awful lot more than that, so.
Yeah, and I tried as well, I've been doing some traveling, so I didn't get a huge opportunity, but last year, there were thirty-three towns in Massachusetts changed Town Administrator, Town Manager role.
That's ten percent.
Yeah, and seven of those towns tried to do it on their own. I tried getting ahold of one town, their Select Board, that initially tried to do it on their own. I don't know if they hired someone and it didn't work out, but then they went to a recruiter after trying on their own and kind of, and that not working out. So, and I wanted to get some experience from their perspective, but, but I wasn't, not able to contact everybody, so.
I can understand using a, I don't know, itchy nose, I understand using a headhunter for gathering candidates. But I think in the bottom line, I would like to see a committee pick that person.
Oh, yeah.
That is, that would, that would be what it is. They, they would basically kind of get us down to...
For ten thousand dollars is a lot of money.
Five, let's say, four to five candidates. It could be less, but probably no more than five, and then we would kind of have input and be able to choose. I, I personally think this is something that requires a big-time commitment and something that we should treat really seriously. This is something, we've set ourselves up to really be, have time and be able to make this work. And so we do have time and a way to screw it up, but I also think if we do, that's not a good thing. We could be in a position where we have the best intentions, and then we set ourselves back. And I feel like hiring this recruiter...
I don't mind hiring somebody to do the legwork.
Yeah, yeah.
But I certainly don't want them to be the one to...
Oh, no, they wouldn't do that.
To be...
We would still have a committee, and we would still be choosing. And even those four or five candidates could come into the, in front of the Select Board for an interview as well, so.
Yeah, and typically, what they do is, I mean, they'll, they'll do that initial screening, you know, and they may screen people out, but you, you can always say to them, oh, can we look at the file that you screened out? And if we say, well, I don't know, I would have interviewed that person, you know, then they, they'll throw them in.
And the difference, firms had different approaches to doing that. Some people would just screen everybody and then give us a handful. Other people, we could be more involved in that screening. So it was, there was some differences there.
And if they don't find us a qualified candidate that's of the right fit, what happens to our money?
Well, one, it seems like everybody, I, I asked them, basically, the... Well, one, it seems like everybody, I, I asked them, basically, the, the, one firm would give us a one-year guarantee. So the person we hired, if that didn't work out after a year, they would automatically help us find another person, no charge. The other firm, I'm not sure.
They didn't say anything?
They didn't say anything in particular, so.
So I'd be much more inclined to go with that firm.
Yeah, 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 yeah. And.
A little bit of a guarantee.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Interesting.
I don't know if we would, you know, it depends on who we went with. One seemed to be over ten, one was under ten. So depending on putting it out to bid, you know.
Did you have a clear preference between the two of you about one firm over another?
Well, I, I was leaning one way and then David talked to someone that was recommending the other way. So it was, it was, uh, I, I think they're pretty comparable, but it, it, it's tricky.
Yeah, there, there are main, there are three main firms that do this work. There's Municipal Resources Incorporated out of Meredith, New Hampshire. They've done a lot of work in the Commonwealth. They, they did our fire management study for us a long time ago. Then Community Paradigm Associates, that's basically three people. Bernie Lynch, former city manager of Lowell, and John Petron, forty years in the business, retired town manager for Burlington, Massachusetts, and then a journalist out of Lowell. They do, they do a lot of work. And then the Collins Center out of UMass Boston does this kind of work as well. I talked to a colleague who's actively looking for work. He is, he has encountered all three organizations. Of the three, he felt that Municipal Resources Incorporated had a better feel for small towns and understood how to handle candidates better. CPA was more oriented towards larger towns, bigger, bigger, uh, bigger pools of candidates for towns of twenty-five thousand or, or higher. And the Collins Center just felt like one person trying to do it all and felt rushed.
Who had a guarantee? Yes, one, your guarantee.
MRI definitely had that guarantee.
Meredith.
The people in New Hampshire.
So would we need to put this up for bid if it's under ten thousand dollars and it's, uh, why don't we just, I'll make a motion that we hire MRI, MRI.
Yeah.
Out of Meredith, New Hampshire.
To, to handle this headhunting for the town of New Hampshire.
Yeah, I'll second that for discussion.
Okay, my, my only pause on that was with a search committee, they were thinking it was gonna be over ten. But we could, we could talk to them, I guess, and see.
With a search committee, it would be over ten?
Yeah.
What's the search committee gonna do versus?
Uh, the search committee would be like us having a committee that was involved in the process.
So it would cost us more money if we had a search committee?
Because there's more, because there's more, because there's more, um, have back and forth and more possibly visits to the town and those kind of things.
I could see if they're doing the interviewing process and the selection process, but if they're just finding candidates and submitting them to us, they're just saying, here you go, this is why we picked them or did it.
That's why I say, let's, let's see when we can, let's talk about it and see what we can.
Yeah, it seems like you're, you're paying two for two things and, and I do wanna hear from you.
Oh, I was gonna say, I'm sure we can tailor our agreement, you know, look at what their standard is. We obviously want the final say, so depending on what their ten thousand dollars gives us, if their final say is included in the ten thousand dollars, maybe we remove that and then now we're at nine thousand or whatever the case may be.
Yeah, so I'll amend my motion that, subject to successful contract and negotiations, we hire MRI.
I amend my second.
So it seems like you're buying two things. You're buying their ability to have connections. You're buying their rolodex, I know that's an old fashioned term, but there you go.
I got, I got one in my office.
And then the thing you're buying is their time, you know, how much time are they gonna spend in.
In my sticky notes.
In investigating the backgrounds of your candidates. Do you, do you have a take on this whole situation?
Uh, you know, I think a, a one-year guarantee is definitely a strong backing to the work they put forward. Especially since over the last three to four years, you can see several small towns, you know, Douglas Palmer, that have all hired town managers or administrators and within six months they're out the door. So I think when you see some, you know, the amount of turnover and retirement in town managers these days, the complexity of the work, I think that one-year guarantee is definitely a, a bold statement.
Yeah, and both, both, we will be involved probably if we do hire them. Both companies were going to most likely interview each one of us to kind of get a feel for what we're looking for. You know, learn about town, those kind of things. And I probably interview some departments as well and kind of just get a feel for the town, be able to put it all together.
How much time do they need to get us, uh, some candidates? Cause we're kind of getting down to the wire here as far as.
It's, we're gonna have, uh, it's like a thirty-day window. So.
I bet they can.
Once we give them the go, I'm guessing we would have candidates in like a sixty to ninety day timeframe. Yeah.
Okay, so there's no question.
So yeah, motion, any other further discussion?
You know, you'd have someone hired from July first and.
Yeah.
That gives them six months.
They said this is a good time right now. It's actually, there aren't a lot of towns looking right this moment. So it is kind of a good time and I asked them, is there a good time or a bad time to be putting these proposals out there because of the budget cycle, these different things? They said, no, if somebody's looking, they're looking and, you know, there isn't really, they don't see any seasonal variation in anything, so.
Yeah, I actually, I actually didn't buy that.
You didn't buy that?
I didn't buy that.
Okay.
It's if somebody's looking for a job change.
Be a line.
Somebody's looking, they're looking. Look at, we got our HR person, he's just looking. He didn't tell anybody, but.
Uh, well, I didn't tell my employer.
That's the last person you told.
And just in, in the past, we went to Beacon and you said you got it off of.
Indeed, yeah.
You know, there, there's so many options out there. If somebody's looking, they're gonna hear from them, I'm sure.
People have their ear to the ground when they're young and looking for a job change.
Jane has one question here.
So when we did our search committee, we didn't get what I would call a reasonable candidate pool the first time. We had to go out again. We're lucky we got a wonderful candidate, but the rest of the pool, not so much. And I think that having somebody who's in this professionally instead of expecting people to find it in an ad somewhere one day or a month or whatever, is a much, especially for a position like this, I think it's much more useful to go that route.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Okay. The money talks in bullshit talks?
Money talks.
So who is going to spearhead this? I had offered myself when Ed was a candidate.
I mean, I'm here till, I'm not, I'm not a candidate anymore. I'm here till July, so I'm more than happy to.
I nominated Ed.
Do you want us to tag team? Do you, how do you want?
Yeah, how do you guys?
You have time.
I'm happy to be involved to kind of get the, get it rolling.
Yeah.
And then we can figure it out, so.
So my only concern with putting it on you is since you're leading, that I'm sure you have a long list of things that might be a little bit more critical as far as just from a strictly HR perspective, knocking out of the way before you head out the door. And, you know, stuff that's been kind of on the back burner for decades, so.
If I, if I need to come up for air, you'll be the first people I tell. Okay, so on your deal?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Sounds good to start off with.
What, what sounds good?
You and Ed.
Okay.
Yeah, next, either week then, let's, let's figure it out how we can.
That's fine, okay.
Let, let those two lead it up and just the chairman and the clerk here, keep in touch with them.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Then you'll let us know, hopefully.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you. Is that it on that?
It's it on that.
Yeah, sorry about the deployment, though.
It's not your fault.
You knew the risk, I guess, when you hired us.
Yep, yep.
We were hoping you weren't and I'm sure you were too, but.
Hey, I told you in my letter I'm retired, eligible, so. It's all good, though.
Yes, all good. Just stay safe, that's all we want. Alright, next.
Next.
He wanted, oh, you're gonna do the DPW another time. What else are you here for?
Uh, refresh my memory. I have supper from CRS slash also remember everything. Uh, sewer water, no. I think that's it.
Alright, escape right here.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
For supper.
Thank you.
Okay, so, town meeting, annual town meeting warrant. This is, do we have to open the warrant?
No, the warrant is closed at this time.
Okay.
Um, the finance committee has dug in and they've made six recommendations so far, seven recommendations so far.
Okay.
Select board could do the consent agenda.
It's a little early, yeah.
Do you wanna wait, Joyce?
Yeah, we're only in the end of February here. We could have really consent extension.
Do we just want to, well, we could go, I mean, we could do the consent agenda. There's not much there, but if we want more time to review, we can.
Can we put the assessors' legal fund on the consent agenda? So, it's the same thing every year, basically, it's for their, their legal fees for abatement requests, right?
You, you can do that?
The, the, um.
Number ten? First, first page.
Cause that's what it's for, right? For the abatement request, um.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, this is a lot higher than we've had before.
What's, what do you mean?
The fifteen thousand, right?
Fifteen thousand, yeah.
What's the average?
Well, they originally asked for seventy-five thousand, so they knocked it down by sixty grand.
Oh, wow.
But is, is that the reason it's not? Because the dollar amount fluctuates on this one pretty significantly? I think that's why it wasn't on consent. Well, I got out here and we can vote on the consent agenda.
Yeah, let's go through the consent agenda real quick and just get those out of the way. I don't think it's much.
So Article one is to allow us to accept and expend monies from gifts and grants without calling the town meeting every time we do that. Chapter ninety is required with the state to keep our roads and bridges money going to get three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars a year out of that. Short-term borrowing is just a management tool in case we have a cash flow problem. We never have, but it's nice to have this in the tool chest. Fund balance transfers, this is a sweep article. We do every town meeting to take unproductive money and put it back into the original pot from when it came. CPA extensions, adding two years to the athletic field projects over at the Hopkins Academy. They have a sunset provision. They were delayed in going because of a boundary issue. So we're just asking that two years be added to this article. What, the water treatment filtration stabilization fund, we put twenty-six thousand dollars away every year for a ten-year cycle in order to develop a pool of money for the filtration membranes. Takes about twenty-six, two hundred and sixty thousand to replace those in a ten-year cycle.
Motion to approve.
Second.
What about the rest of them here?
And then the CPA administrative, this is, this is required by law.
Nice, though.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I was just thinking, do you mind if we just pull out the, the, the fund balance transfers for this go-round? Just to, we'll get that a little bit closer and make sure that all looks good.
So pull it off the consent agenda?
Just pull it off, this particular vote right now, yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
And just, we'll pen that one.
But you have, uh, let's see, you got more to go on this consent agenda?
That was it, I think, right?
What happened to?
I'm just saying pull Article five off to the side, or four, four right now.
Well, assessors' legal fee is on there.
That's not on consent.
It's not consent.
Well, how come it continues on? Look at, there's ten. Ten, eleven, twelve.
Oh, but it doesn't say consent agenda.
Oh, it has to say consent there, oh. What is this then? What is this gonna be?
Oh, that will be later.
Later?
Yeah.
We're not gonna talk about those two.
We don't need to talk about that right now.
Gotcha.
Okay, so any further discussion on the consent agenda?
So we're going one to seven with the exception of four.
Correct.
One to seven, okay. I thought we would take that, when I raised the thing, I thought it was all of them we were gonna discuss tonight.
Oh, everything, oh, no, no, no. So.
Turned my hair gray, for god's sake.
You'd be done in record time.
I'm too young to turn gray, right?
Alright, all, all those in favor, the consent agenda minus Article number four.
Aye.
Aye.
Gotcha.
And then, well, we can actually talk about that, okay. Anything else here we should address right now?
Not really.
David, anything in particular? Get that off our list?
No, I think, I think six articles, five articles down at the first night, that's good, that's a good night.
Okay. So let's just do these three sewer, or well, one sewer and two water abatement items real quick. Select board will review the sewer connection at fourteen Breckenridge Road. I don't know if everybody's gotten a chance to read that, but Chris Okafor is recommending that we grant this abatement, that we do not charge the fees to this address.
And reimburse them for the sewer fees they did pay from last year.
And, yes.
And they're asking for a waiver of the connection fees.
No, that's, I, I actually spoke with Chris today. He said not to reimburse them, I had thought, for what they've paid, but to waive the permits and fees for the tying fees, tie that house, that property into the sewer system.
But they are.
That's the way I, that's, that's the way I understand it. Everybody's paid for sewer throughout the whole project since nineteen eighty, when they put the sewer down those streets. It was an incentive to have the people that were tied to the septic systems to tie in to the sewer system. They were all charged fees from day one.
Even though they weren't actually connected?
Even though they weren't actually connected.
Yeah, certainly, I'm taking baby steps on this. Sewer impact fees wasn't in effect when this was originally was built, so there would have been none at that day. They did pay connection fees that were applicable at the day. They just didn't connect for whatever reason. We don't know. So the fee, waiving the fees just seems appropriate.
Yeah.
Certainly granting the abatement for the most recent sewer bill is appropriate.
Oh, okay, for just the recent one, not the past.
But is that, this, this is reimbursement of, it looks like the homeowner is requesting that we reimburse sewer fees paid eight eighteen to eleven nineteen. So that, is that the most recent bill? That seems like over a year.
The most recent one is the one that went out.
Quarter, right?
Yeah, it just went out on February third.
So I, so it sounds like Chris is recommending that we waive the connecting fees. And the homeowner is also, in addition to that, asking for reimbursement of sewer fees. So I guess our question is, do we make a motion to just reimburse the fees or to, or, I'm sorry, to waive the fees? Or do we waive the fees and reimburse the sewer payment?
I'll make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the DPW director.
I'll second.
If it's not satisfactory, come back to us.
Second.
So just to be clear, we're gonna waive the.
Fees.
The connect, the permit fees.
Connecting fees.
But not the back pay, the previously paid sewer bills?
Right.
Except for the most recent quarter.
Quarter, okay.
Oh, we are gonna put the most recent quarter, reimburse that.
We're gonna pay it.
Yeah.
Do right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we knew of this issue, but the Collector's Office sent out the bill without knowing that we knew that the issue was happening. So that just, that just seems...
So we're not reimbursing, really? We're just...
Telling them they don't have to pay it. It was a draw.
We're not reimbursing, yeah.
It's pretty good, though, to have a septic system that hasn't been pumped in over twenty years and is still operating fine.
There's, there's been minimal people living in that house, and it's changed hands a couple times already, I guess. Someone... One of the realtors called and was given the wrong information, and nobody knows who made that, that critical decision and said it was on sewer when it wasn't. And there's still a couple other properties that we're not assured of that were going to be in the process of die testing to make sure they are on sewer, so.
All right.
Okay.
Any further discussion on this?
Who seconded?
I think Joyce did.
I seconded, thank you.
Uh, all those in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
Okay, then we have, um, the water abatement at Six Hillside and the amount of thirty-two dollars and fifty cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those... Or any further discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Then we have a water and sewer abatement, sixty-eight Russell Street, and the amount of twenty-eight dollars and forty-three cents.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
All right, we got those.
I'm trying to get the next page. Abstain on the other one too.
I got you all day.
All right, senior center library and fire association updates. Uh, Jane, you wanna go first, senior center or...? Yeah.
You always get to go first.
I'm gonna go first, Molly. We're gonna open first, so you guys should go first.
So, just checking, um, everybody on the board should have received the monthly update from DA Sullivan, who's dated February seventh. Basically, from a financial standpoint, you can see there are change orders at this point. And, uh, you know, Mark did a good job just kind of outlining the retainage, giving everybody an update on where we're at. Um, you know, I mean, I think if you... All you have to do is drive by, it's pretty obvious we have ourselves a library. Uh, pretty impressive building. Looking forward to, you know, the finishing work on the exterior, but...
Certainly, we don't want it to stay purple, I hope.
Can you put a big sign on it that says "library" because more people say to me, "How can you possibly open in May? You're not even closed."
Yeah. Well, I think that the, um, the next meeting is the whole conversation about that great sign too.
Yeah.
So, is it on schedule still as far as opening?
Yeah, I mean, there, there was a little bit of concern that it might start to go a little bit off schedule, but again, you know, weather's been cooperating, they've got it wrapped.
I thought they said August twenty. No, twenty-twenty, August twenty-twenty? In that email I got from, uh, not from Mark, but from...
Right, I mean, I think we've been looking at late summer all along.
Yeah.
You know?
August, yeah.
So, you know, whether it was August first, but it's not, um... What we're really keeping an eye on is the construction cost itself in terms of any impact there.
Great.
Go ahead, Joyce.
Um, we just had a couple of change orders, but we talked about it at our last meeting. Uh, nothing official, but we knew we had to do some additional electric outlets in the dispatcher area. Um, so that was gonna cost like six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars, and then there was additional electrical work to get done in that area also, which comes to two thousand dollars, two-hundred... Two-thousand-three-hundred-and-forty-two. Uh, we have not voted on this. We did discuss it at the last meeting, so it'll be brought up at our, our next, uh, first meeting of the month, um...
You don't vote on it now, or...
If you would like to, that would be fine.
If you want to, just get it off.
Please don't, okay. We'll do it through the finance committee first of the building committee, and then we'll bring in...
Okay, you don't have the actual, okay, that's...
I have the actual C O two-twenty-three.
Rough electrical right now?
You don't. Okay, so we'll do... Pardon?
They're just into the rough electrical right now?
Yes, yes. And we were just... Had picked up the console type of things that need to go there, which is gonna be the same thing as what we have at the main dispatch area.
So you can just take everything out of there and put it up there if you were needed to.
Well, we're gonna build in a console and everything up there, so yes, that everything would just fit up there.
And are you on time?
We are on time.
What, July?
Looking good.
July, yeah.
We are so on time.
We are on time, you betcha. And with a little cushion.
That's good. All right, Jane.
So the senior center is moving along. The sheetrocking finishes this week and painting starts. The bathrooms are tiled. Unfortunately, they, at their dollar, had to pull out a set of the tiles because it was supposed to be an accent wall of dark blue and the others white, and they made them all dark blue. Not good for seniors' visibility. So, that's their thing, they're doing it. Um, the fireplace is go... Is in and the stonework on the front of that's starting. HVAC is finishing this week. Did I say that? They're putting in... They're starting kitchen equipment in a couple of weeks. Things are moving right along.
And they're painting walls and all kinds of stuff. No flooring yet, right?
Flooring will be after. Everything else is done so they don't drop on it.
But there's actually paint on the walls now. Drywall's done.
Well, not quite yet, but they're getting there.
Getting there.
Oh, and they're putting up all the, um, wood trim on windows and door frames.
In May for opening day, so?
Yeah, we're counting on it. And a big party on the fourteenth. Fourteenth, fifteenth, sixteenth, seventeenth. We'll be sending out schedules.
Did, did we get any word back for the opening and anything?
No, it take... It takes a little while.
Okay.
But, um, I would say that's to the positive that they have not said no yet.
Yeah, that's good.
So... But...
Yeah.
As soon as I hear, I'll let people know.
Um, do they have a idea of when they're gonna put the final pavement on the outside, on the exterior?
They obviously need to wait till the asphalt company's open, but they're talking mid-April if they don't need to rush because they got... Today they got, um, the surround for the dumpster area. The plywood that you see that you haven't seen before is because a neighbor complained about the noise of a blower. Um, they got the fence at the top of the retaining walls on the south side of the property. It looks really nice. It actually makes that property look a lot better than it used to look.
That heater that they got sounds like a jet going over your house all the time, so.
Well, that was what he was saying.
He said it's gonna be completed this week, so maybe we can start the heating system.
They're not gonna tie into it. They don't wanna start any equipment until we take occupancy, so the warranties start at that point, till not there's any nickel.
Plus you contaminated it all with drywall dust and everything else.
Well, there is a noise level from seven AM until eleven PM at night.
All right, great, thank you. And we could do the town administrator report?
Sure.
Anything we did not discuss there?
Uh, I'll make it very brief. So we've submitted two applications to CPA in order to restore Goodwin Memorial Library electrical systems, ceiling, and other improvements in order to begin to move some of the department, town departments out of town hall over there. So hopefully that, uh, the CPA will see their way towards throwing some money that... Towards those projects. Um, just charging through that we haven't already talked to death about. We got a grant for D L T A for twelve thousand dollars for continuing the work on a municipal guide for large-scale solar developments. The widening of Route Nine, uh, and Bay Road Bridge. We received the information from Senator Comerford's office and Mass Department of Transportation has agreed to postpone the Bay Road Bridge replacement to twenty-twenty-four or twenty-twenty-five, and that'll help enormously with the east-west traffic during the Route Nine widening project. Departmental revenues, uh, for the current fiscal year are meeting expectations, as are departmental expenses. Good shape in terms of money coming in and money going out. Uh, financial management team will meet next Thursday at noon time to, um, explore better models for the administrative charges for the enterprise funds. And they'll make a recommendation and bring... We'll bring that recommendation back to the board. And that'll have maybe an impact upon the budget, thirty-five thousand. Budget update, we just went through that. Free cash certification, that's all done. Uh, the audit is in process, and I had the management meeting with the auditors this afternoon. Things seem to be good. Um, and then the townspeople have three opportunities to, um, cast votes. One is March third, presidential primary, Super Tuesday. April fourteenth, annual town elections, there's a race for the select board. And then May seventh is the annual town meeting. Everybody who's a registered voter is encouraged to participate in our democracy.
Have we gone over, um, dates for future meetings?
We were going to put that on the agenda for next time.
What is next time?
Sorry?
When is that actually?
Uh, the March fourth.
All right.
We can... I can... Well, yeah, we can do it next, next week.
I can tell you, I can tell you right now if you wish.
I have them up till, you know, eight... Mid-April, basically, so that we can talk about what we wanna do after that.
March fourth, March eighteenth, April first, and April fourteenth.
What's, what is happening in April four... In April?
April first and April fourteenth.
All right.
You're having it on a Tuesday?
Fourteenth is two weeks from the first.
The fifteenth, I think. Yeah, so the first and fifteenth.
I've got the eleventh as well.
Eleventh is a sad day, dude.
Oh, of March.
Of March.
Maybe, maybe I have it incorrect, because I have the eleventh and the eighteenth of March.
What, you got three?
You started on March.
You got three in March?
That's what is on my calendar, but that doesn't really mean...
If you do have a meeting, just know that that week I'm actually out of town at a conference.
Okay.
Which one?
The eleventh of March.
March, hold on, let's start with March. Let's start with March again.
March is the fourth.
Fourth.
And the eighteenth, for sure.
All right.
The eleventh is questionable, but we can verify that. And then we have April first, April fifteenth. And then I have April twenty-second, but... April twenty-second.
That's a backup.
Is a backup, okay. And then I have the twenty-ninth is the town meeting public forum, right now.
You're gonna do that on Wednesday night?
That's what I have right now.
Okay.
What was... Was it on your calendar, on March eleventh, or no?
Uh, March eleventh, uh, no.
No, okay, so...
I'll have to decide whether I'm gonna go to the corned beef dinner on... In March or something else in April, so we'll see.
Yeah.
We just have to do one more before May, before the summer. Wait there, folks.
What was for dinner tonight?
I don't know. Do you know what it was? Polish dinner tonight?
No, I don't know.
I don't know.
I know, fire department's cooking something.
They're a good crowd there tonight.
Well, and April fourteenth too, as a note, that might be the last election we have at the high school. Because we might have them at the, uh...
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The, uh, senior center after, after that, after it opens in May.
Do you have a CPA thing from Mary Thayer?
Yes.
Fourteenth is town.
Yes.
That's what I was gonna get into, is CPA. We have someone we need to appoint for the position.
I, I, I had not put it on the agenda because I had asked someone for, uh, a letter. They did not submit, but you do have a letter of interest from Mary Thayer.
Mm-hmm.
Um, she has experience working with the CPA. I don't believe she was on the CPA. I believe she applied for CPA.
Yeah.
And I believe she has other sort of beneficial, um, interests that would help the town with their CPA.
Great.
So she has expressed interest in serving on it, so if I would like to.
Make a motion to apply Mary Thayer to the CPA.
For the unexpired term?
For the unexpired term.
Second. Thank you, Mary.
Any further discussion?
No, I'll just say thanks for volunteering. Um, she helped with the, uh, Hadley Reservoir Conservation Land in that committee, and she's been involved in a lot of things, so it's great to have her involved in it all.
Yeah, sure.
That's good.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'll email her tomorrow morning and email her, because she's gonna jump right on.
Yeah. Any other unforeseen items right now before we go to announcements?
Yeah, just a quick update.
There you go.
I attended the campus community coalition, the C C C meeting.
Okay.
Over at the university today, along with, um, Joel. Was there representing the Hadley Police Department. And so this was a meeting, uh... It's an ongoing meeting. They have X number of meetings a year. And just a reminder, this is the group that Sally Lenowski, uh, works with and Tony Marulis heads up, along with, I think, Lindsay Strom, who is, uh, maybe co-chair.
He's retiring, I presume?
Yeah, and it's the, um, it's the campus coalition to reduce high-risk drinking. You know, so this was developed several years ago in response to a lot of the issues that we were obviously having at our flagship campus, along with many other places. So, uh, part of the agenda was a presentation, um, by the Executive Director of Wellness Access Prevention, and the initiative right now is they're very much focused on, um, mental health issues. You know, I think they kind of started with the education around substance abuse in general, and now they're backing it up, looking at... So it's all good information, but the pertinent part for us is they're planning for the possibility of March seventh, being the weekend prior to the kids leaving for break, so...
The learning weekend term?
They, they are requesting that certain words not pass our lips, so I will not mention the BP. But basically, what we should know is that there's really no noticeable change in the approach they're taking. Last year went really, really well. Um, the weather certainly cooperated as well because it was pretty cold and lousy out. But, um, they're actually reducing the number of, of officers in state police that they're bringing in. A couple, few years back, things were bad enough. They had like a couple of hundred. They're down to a hundred, which is great. Um, Hadley's actively engaged. Joel's gonna be going knocking door to door, some of the party houses, just saying, "Hey, guys, you know, heads up, just wanna make sure you know what the rules are." So, uh, they're not really anticipating a huge issue, uh, but just, you know, know that we're, we're engaged with it.
It's a crap shoot. If it's warm, they're out.
If it's warm, it could be off.
Can you call in any crowds?
We always put the E D on a word also.
Yeah, it was on the list to call.
Yes.
All right, any other announcements?
Could you... Can we do one more request for dedications for the annual report and the Fred Oakley Award?
Yes.
As soon as possible. They could email info@hadleyma.org.
Okay. And do you have all the annual report items that you need, or are you still waiting on some folks?
Perhaps some departments forgot to get theirs to me, but I'm sure that they're in my mailbox by now.
Okay.
But also a reminder that boards and committees also need to submit theirs. There's, there's still quite a few outstanding.
Okay. Do we have any nominations yet for any of those or...
I have one for Fred, uh, Oakley, um, and I've had one for, uh, the annual report. I don't know if you want me to say them or just hold it.
Yeah, I was just curious if we got any.
They were both good.
Okay, and can we make a motion to adjourn? That's everything?
I just have one.
You have one thing, I'm sorry.
Not a Hadley resident, but John Swizzlowski, uh, passed away. Um, the family owns a lot of property in town. But anyway, his brother does live in town, Carl, uh, so to Carl, uh, for the loss of his brother and to their family also, and many farming friends here in Hadley too. Um, John was a quiet guy, but a good guy, so very nice. So condolences to them.
Great. Now, motion to adjourn?
It's moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a great night.
Thank you.